All the meeting to order, we can please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States.
Rachel, can I have a roll, please? Here.
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to make an announcement that an executive session was held at 6:15 PM tonight for consultation with legal counsel, and an executive session was held at 5:30 on January 18th to discuss potential legal issues. Counsel, is there a motion to approve the agenda? A second. Second, any counsel discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Agenda carries. We'll move on to public comment, and we encourage all those speaking to complete your comments within three minutes. Stay on topic, present your comments in a spirit of cooperation and collaboration, and be respectful of the institution of Borough Council and the public in your words, tones, and gestures. Please comply with any instructions I may give you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I appreciate that, sir. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Thank you, Ms. Watson. Thank you, Ms. Watson. That's a lot to take. Thank you for your time, Ms. Watson. Any other public comment? Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Any other public comment? Being none, we'll move to the reports. I do not have a president's report this week, so go to the Borough Manager.
Sure. Just a quick thank you to our staff, Rob and Rachel, for kind of coordinating here, the new office furniture, and to Rachel for our test run today, trying to make a... Thank you for that. And the lights, yeah, so good job on that. And then, no, just, you know, just quickly on the bid, just to clarify, the building at 120 Marshall was listed. It was a competitive bid. It was listed on the major real estate websites, so that we did go through the proper steps on that.
Mr. Solicitor, anything from your office? If... Any questions for the chief?
The office. He wants to...
Fire company... Any, you're here, but you're probably not here to deliver a fire company report. We'll move to committees. Personnel, I'm going to start with personnel. We did not meet this past month, but we have a number of initiatives that we will get to when we reschedule our meeting. We were having some issue with the date, so we're going to move that around. Counsel, I did want to let you know that something that we did not do, that we were supposed to do in the last month or so, was start the manager review process, so I'll be sending out a review and instructions for doing Kyle's review, if you want to get that taken care of. Finance?
The President Finance Committee met on January 26th, primarily to review our calendar, our deliverables for this year, and revise them a little bit, but also to take a quick look at the close of 2022. Overall, the general shape of the business from the townships, the borough standpoint, is pretty solid. Looks like we were over on overall expenses and overall increase in revenue as well. It sort of balances each other. Nick is finalizing those numbers. We should have our final numbers by the end of February is what we're hoping to do to close that out. There's certainly some bills and accruals that have to be added back into 2022, which is totally legal and ethical and appropriate. It just hasn't been done yet because of timing. Finance Department is trying to do that and lock that up soon. Just very briefly, administration had amended their budget late in the year to 461,000. It's running about 480,000 overall based on personnel. Finance also had an amended budget of 271,000 over a budget of 246,000 originally. Lease were at $2.09 million overall, pretty close to being final in terms of numbers there, and that shouldn't be any major changes from what we see right now. Codes amended their budget upwards by $350,000 to $725,000 overall, but they're looking like they're coming in at about $670,000. That's primarily because of a big increase in projects going on. Street expenditures were amended upward by about $100,000. They look like they'll still be over that, basically for engineering fees for large capital projects going on this year. Water fund is running pretty much in line. Expenses were down a bit from the 1.6 million of the sewer fund. Revenue is lower because we didn't get the fourth quarter tenant township to bill out as we should. What we're actually trying to do, we have been meeting with tenant township on the sewer issue, and what we're trying to do is we're doing, we're billing them based on the legal contract, legal contract that we have. What we're trying to do, excuse me, what we're trying to do is to go back to them and say, hey, guys, that's the deal, but here's what we think the actual flows are based on water, which they don't have to give us, but they are. So we're trying to come up with a better billing situation than the contract actually allows us to do. So there's actually a fair amount going on there. Crash funds seems to be pretty much in line with where it was. Liquid fuel expenses were amended down because one major project came in under by about 9,000, and parking is expected to have about $175,000 surplus, basically because of revenues generated from our... We'll have those final numbers by the end of February, probably for our marketing.
Any questions for Mr. Norris? Sir? Human relations. Any questions, Ms. Savala? Municipal relations, I don't think...
We did not meet this one.
Are any EMS? All right, we'll move on to the discussion items. Yes, John? John, this isn't a question and answer right now. Well, you can ask Mr... We'll address it afterwards. We'll address it afterwards. We'll move on to the discussion items and Kennet collaborative special events application. Dan, you've got like four hours here worth of stuff because it looks like you scoped out the whole calendar year. Oh, yeah, you know, yeah. Why don't we do that? Sure. Thanks, Matt.
All of the... We'd asked in collaborative was... A little bit early so that we could get a feel for staffing, because there's a lot of the offensive police time, public works time, and you wanted to get a master calendar out for the entire year. So they did that. They brought in every event that they know that's planned as of right now that would require a permit. This is the complete map on there. We can go, I don't know, assuming of the... Of the ones that are being presented, there were no comments or changes from Public Safety Committee except for the cost. We did not have the costs back from public works. It was just provided. So the applicants did not have the costs at the time they applied. They did not see their numbers. I don't know if we got the numbers that are not... Okay, so you have the numbers. So you didn't... But the numbers that council has... That's where the question's coming up, where council decides is... What does that happen? For the permits themselves, Public Safety did not have any recommended changes.
Thank you. So are we considering the permits and having discussion on the cost?
Yeah, if it's helpful, I can speak to the public works side, and maybe the chief can do the police side. Just a quick thank you to our public works team. They have really been creative and tried to work this number down. Right now, we're at $177 for a street closure, so there's about 200 or so dollars in rental of the equipment. So there's signage that tells you where to reroute when you're coming. It's also the barricades that you rent. It's a good model. It limits the things we have to store. It's pass-through costs, a relatively affordable, good model there. Previously, we had two employees come in to set up, and two employees come in to then close it down and reopen the road. Challenges, and all of that happens after our normal hours. So to ask an employee to come in after hours, we do pay overtime. You take, you know, their salary, right, and then you take the fringe benefits, put time and a half on that to employees, because it is a good amount of work before and after, so it was an eight-hour charge at that higher rate. Our staff has worked on it. We're going to shift our two employees in public work back by a couple hours so that we can open up while they're on shift to avoid that charge, and then change it on the other end, bring just one employee in. So they've really stretched to try to make this as affordable as possible, while at the same time not speeding the cost.
So I'm still unclear here. We're taking, we're taking the passing on the cost as a separate issue. I just didn't see that specific item on the agenda as far as passing along the cost.
My assumption, and this is something that counsel can obviously agree or not agree, my assumption is...
Numbers would come in front of council, and if council would approve the application and direct out what... So we approved the format, if not...
Okay.
Is this how we've done it in the past? This feels different than the last.
We have not in the past been passing on the cost. Some arbitrarily, not on every single permit. And after the discussions on finance last fall and the tax raise, the department heads came back to Public Safety and said, to Public Safety Committee, said, "We can change our budget, budget what you want us to, and do all the excess work," because the excess work is budgeted. That was... Department heads requested that if Public Safety was going to approve the format, we pass along the cost or have counsel aware that it would either be a cost overrun, a budget, or it needed to be...
This was considered as...
Correct. They were unfunded in the police department and public works. That's...
Last year was an estimate. I don't want to speak for the chief, but at least from our perspective, this is an estimate that we have pretty good confidence, but something comes up at the end.
Something comes up at the event. I don't expect that in the general, it doesn't happen, but this is a disclaimer.
So for the most part, these, if not all of them, are events that we have had, we're comfortable with. There's probably not not many changes. So does council have any objection to Dan either presenting them sort of here, here they all are? And then we can discuss them just in in general, and if anything stands out, we can pull it out of consent. But other than that, we can just talk about all of them in one discussion instead of one specific item. That would be our cost that that's what we're talking about passing on to Cliver. Yeah. Yeah. Exactly what we're talking about, John. Exactly what we're talking about. Dan, did you want to present from your? Yeah, pause after each one, just in the event anything pops into our head and we have have any discussion. So, thank you. Any questions on the A third Thursdays? I I did have one. I know, so this is just the third Thursdays. I know the last couple of years we've done different things, and I believe that there's some interest in possibly doing what we did last year. We're closing the east block of State Street. And that's not part of this, but in the event there is some interest, I would assume they could just come to public safety and present that case. This is just.
Specifically said that.
Any other questions on third Thursday?
Process with public safety. I had raised a concern that we need to do a little bit more of a comprehensive preparation plan for truck traffic and vehicle traffic, such as some additional sign boards and message boards to let people know much further out, you know. I was just concerned over the number. Does that incorporate that into this?
No, it doesn't. It just incorporates that temporary sign.
Are arable. I think. Give me a little bit of. Pairing with the amount of traffic that comes through every third Thursday last year. And please don't, don't uh take this as a negative against the wonderful. Every time that we had tractor trailer traffic ending up in residential. Broad Street. It's just too difficult to throw an arboard up and and direct them when they have no idea what they're driving. And most of the truck traffic that comes through this area does not know the schedule of, you know, our our events or that, nor are they typically always familiar. I'm just concerned that we're not putting. Just thinking about. Message board out by them. For a larger event, mushroom festival. Um same thing up at Route eighty-two, one, let traffic know that you cannot come into all of a sudden the intersection of Union Street, Linden Street, realize that. And tractor trailer has to work down West. Don't know that we're considering probably some additional costs.
If how much time do you think that would take to like, is another month good to put some?
For that on to public works.
Okay.
Because it's nothing I have any.
Rob, any thoughts on that? I I'm just, I I think that's a good idea too, because when we're thinking about just that night, that's what we're considering. Yeah, we we love it. It sounds good. But if we could plan and prepare more adequately, I do think there's some merit to that. Council, any thoughts on that and Mr. Mayor from public safety standpoint?
We did talk about that. Signs we put out. Um so I think that that has, that has to be happened. My recommendation. To approve the permit subject to final cost.
And let's retake this one. We will move this out of consent since it will just not be a flat where proving it. With that. Sound good? Council, any objection? Great. Need discussion or questions on the parade? Thanks, John.
For what it's worth, the Memorial Day committee does a really good job, which I'm sure you know, I mean, it's really a lot of mind.
So that can send summer fest. Questions on the summer fest? Well, I did have a question on that one. I know with. I loved that event last summer and it was a nice size and just had a good feel to it. I happen to know someone that actually is a Kennet resident who owns a tasting room somewhere else in Chester County. And they had indicated that they were not allowed to participate because they didn't grow their grapes in the area. And I was just wondering if there was selection criteria or what winery is going to be selected or not. I was just curious because I think that would support a local enough business as well as a resident of Kennet. Okay. Okay. Okay, and I can give any information that I have to you as well. Any other questions in summer? Yes. Oh, okay. Okay, Dan, do you want to come up to the microphone? Thank you.
Is this on? All right.
Thanks, Rob. Right, so we will move that to consent. Brew Fest.
Uh Brew Fest, so uh I I'm sure you all know Brew Fest, popular uh event here. Another way for us to uh raise money to support the programming that goes back into the other community events uh and and programs that we do. Uh and uh this will move forward. Our plan is is very much consistent with how it was this past year. Any questions?
None. We'll move that to consent. Clover Market.
Uh Clover Market, so this is an application that we uh submitted on behalf of Clover Market uh and uh in in support of of them and what they're doing. Um and it is again uh i- in keeping with how it has been done this past year. Any questions?
Questions or comments? The same event we've ever always had, John. That's something we need to consider, though.
Candy Trail, so this, uh sorry, were there any questions on Candy Trail? This is uh an application that we've submitted on behalf of and in partnership with um Karma. Uh and uh in the application, we did request a street closure here, which is uh reflected in the on the financial impact here.
Any questions for the Candy Trail?
Daniel Embry, as a matter of fact, of the Embryville family locally. I'd like to introduce you to your long-lost cousin right over there, John.
We're gonna, we're gonna talk family trees after.
My question, and I asked Daniel, or I'm not sure if the safety committee looked at it, was last year we talked about. Be a street closing. Um and this year that we're, I was there, there weren't a lot of folks, and most of them were younger kids and it's all just their moms and dads. Do we need to close the street for that event?
And and I I did speak to uh to Lisa with Karma this morning, and um she indicated it was not essential. Um I think that there are kind of mixed feelings, and we'd be very open to recommendations one way or another. Um or if it's helpful to kind of move forward with approvals now and make a decision at a later date, we'd be open to that as well.
It sounds like the borough is at least open to your recommendations. I mean, public safety has to trump. It's not needed.
Appreciate that.
Objection, moving that to consent, though, correct?
I will correct one comment made earlier. Um I for one, and I think a lot of folks are thrilled to be a part of the Kennet community.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Winter Fest.
Uh so we.
Haven't even gotten to this year's.
We haven't even gotten to this year's. Uh we do have a few tickets left, though, uh for this year. So uh I hope that you'll be joining us on uh the twenty-fifth of this year. Uh we are putting in the application for the twenty-fourth of next year, Saturday. Uh again, in keeping with how we will be doing it uh in in uh just a few weeks here. Um the idea here was that we would submit a year's worth of the applications together. Any questions about Winter Fest?
All right, we move that to consent. Then is Gina taking over for the Mushroom Festival?
Thank you, Daniel. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Gina. Gina, are you able to come to the mic, please, so everyone can hear your lovely voice?
Um my only question was, I assumed it didn't include at least that forty-seven. Yeah. So like I would like to pay these other fees instead of about sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars. I know.
Stretch that out over three days.
I know, I know. It'll be the same as last year. We're gonna try to keep the same footprint, keep it a little smaller still.
Questions regarding? Thank you, Gina.
Yep.
John, we'll, we'll, we'll take some questions. We'll, we'll get, we'll clarify at the end of the meeting. We're not going to do back and forth during the business. John, we're passing it on to the organizations.
John, if I could, historically, John, most of the events have, Mushroom Festival's always paid.
Yep. All right, we will move on to the Harb application. Mr. Froning, come on down.
Yes, I, we had one application that was presented for a Coozum Funeral Home. Uh it goes self-explanatory. Any questions, be happy to answer them. Also submitted for your review, our annual report, which detailed the number of applications and types that we did in two thousand and twenty-two.
Any questions on the Harb application? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
We'll move that to consent. All right, we'll move on to boards and commissions. Nice to see some new candidates up for appointment. You doing this, Rachel, or?
So. At the Smart Bolt. Is um the tree commission. It tree commission.
Is that commission with this appointment, will they be filled or will they still have one vacancy? Any questions regarding Mr. Volpe's? Move that to consent. Anything from council? Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Owens? Objection noted. Any questions regarding Mr. Owens? All right, I will move this to consent. All right, now we have the resignation of Ruth Ann Devaney from the library board. Any, any? Any discussion from council? All right. But there will be an opening on the library board of trustees, or an appointment from council. We have the list of all the reappointments, and that was going to be my question, if everybody's been contacted and is willing to serve for another term. Any questions from council? We will move this to consent. Thank you, Rachel. All right, moving on to administration, considering the letter of support for the Cramery of Kennet Square Restoration Project.
Sure, so I'd ask that we take this off consent, move it to Wednesday.
Any objection to moving it out of consent and waiting for all action on Wednesday? We'll do that presentation. All right, considering the amendment to the 120 Marshall Street Agreement of Sale. Mike, are you kicking this one off?
Yeah.
All right.
Considered two amendments. First is allow the applicant, while they're in their due diligence, to apply to the second is to tweak the language related to the parking. It'll be structured, will be as made of the school. Will be established long. Will come for the applicants. Work together in the future for appropriate signage. And they're not.
Ms. Helmut, Ms. Gaver, did you have anything to present as well?
No, I just wanted to clarify. Megan Helmut, for those who don't know me, I'm a resident in the borough now, guys. Okay, 514 Magnolia Street. My office is at 213 South Broad. And, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that there was no changes to the agreed-upon offer or terms or anything like that. We just went back and forth to clarify all the language and make sure we all understood the parking.
Yep. Any questions from council? Either Mr. Cruddy or Ms. Gaver and Ms. Helmut?
The parking arrangement, which is required for the use, is in perpetuity. Where is it tied to specific spots or just the requirement?
Number of spots. Whatever the zoning ordinance requires. You have that allotment of spots. Zoning ordinance requires different number of spots.
Is it legal, appropriate, ethical for us to have this discussion, right? So is there any, is there any consideration to make you get a 20-year? Right, just concerned about the in-perpetuity question. Need that in order to have the use.
We're just looking at being able to get this approved for financing, compliant with ADA. It's an accommodation, so we have some different requirements there. So anyone who's going to be in that building is going to parking. We're not asking for specific spots or to be able to tow people away or anything like that, but you want to be hospitable and have people there, and we need somewhere for that park.
In the other, thank you very much. The other question that came up was around the Harb, I guess, right? For up Kennet Square Historic Architecture Review Board provided, buyer's not able to obtain approval. The historic nature of the building is what makes the building this special.
So, Bob, and we revise that.
Ms. Gaver, just real quickly, can you identify yourself just for the reference?
I'm sorry, Mary Kay Gaver, I'm counsel to the, the buyer. And we revise that to say we would, we would have the right to go for Harb approval within the due diligence period. So if we don't do that for whatever reason, but we don't get any additional time, it's not after due diligence. So that, anything with that expires. I think we just would like to see some of our material choices so that we can do pricing.
You accepted the historic nature overall.
Yes, yeah, that's exactly it. We just want to make sure we get Harb's buy-in on everything that we're doing before we proceed.
Any other questions? All right, there being none, any objections to moving this to consent on Wednesday? Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to considering settlement proposal with PAC 2. I think we're going to get an update on this from Mr. Cruddy, but we are not prepared to take, take action just yet. What do we skip? Oh, the property manager, oh geez, I went ahead, sorry. Considering the contracts for recommended property listing and property management services, this is going to be a fun one, too, so don't want to, don't want to skip this one.
Last couple of months, we received, this starts basically, as well as provide property management for it. Following our last meeting, we combined the two bids. It makes more sense to have them together. We ended up receiving three bids through this latest process. It was a primary property management company, and each of them chose a sub to act to help with the local listing side of it. Just for a quick review, staff went through these bids, some were up to 80 or 100 pages in, tried to give some recommendations here. Ultimately, through a recorded voting review session, available to anyone who wishes to hear it, we end up recommending NAI Emory Hill. With, they've scored the highest out of our three. Second was SSH, and third was the Commonwealth.
Hopefully councils had a chance to go through any discussions, questions, clarifications.
Yeah, so that was part of the review, and that was some of the criteria. Ended up being pretty similar. When I did my own evaluation, it looked like SSSA. It were a little bit less, but we felt like in total. And just, Rob, let me know here, if we could really try to speak into the mics. I understand some are, I had to really speak into it. They are, okay, thank you.
No sidebars?
Yes.
I appreciated the thorough review that did. There were a lot of similarities with all of them. Personally, I'd be happy with all three. I do think that the number one choice did work.
I think that was the takeaway. And being as fair as we could, we really tried to limit our review to the materials as we were provided.
Anything else from council? The idea as far as, I mean, the, ideally, we would want the selection of one to come before the vote on Wednesday, so we don't need to make that decision. But the motion that will be made Wednesday will be to move to select whomever. We can just, question right now as far as pros, cons. Correct? Well, correct. Anything else from council? All right. And I'm going to pull that out of consent, just so we can actually say who in the motion on Wednesday. All right, now we'll go to the settlement proposal with PAC 2. And I, we, we've had discussions with this as a related to a legal matter, but the work that was done, and Rob, if you can clarify this, the work that was done, it was outside the scope of the project. And sort of how it was, how it went about wasn't necessarily accurate, but the work that was done was correct and actually needed to happen. And by the past engineer not saying he would approve it, that council at that time never saw the change order. Okay. Any questions from council or discussion? We will pull this out of consent and vote separately on it, pending. All right, the library assistance items.
Yeah, so this meeting really is highly. Kevin Burrow, Library. This is a request from the library to help them a bit. I think I'll turn it over to Jeff, and you can just ascend to the request.
Yep, my name is Jeff Yetter, I'm on the library board. Tonight with me is Brad Piper, our newly crowned president. Took me three years to find someone to replace, but we got him, so he's stuck with you for a while. Yeah, all we're here tonight is to ask for the last three and a half million that we need to finish the project. If you could put that on the consent agenda, we would really appreciate it.
For those listening on Zoom, that was in jest.
Oh, okay. Actually, tonight, all we're asking you to consider is the 15-minute parking spaces along State Street and Willow. The other two items have been confused and complicated because the parking lot that we were going to be licensing from the Y is apparently possibly not available because of code issues. They think it is, you think it's not, we'll figure that out later, we don't need to do that tonight. We are looking for 13, 15-minute spots. The average person that comes to the library spends about 10 minutes, they come in, pick up their book and leave. That would be, I'm doing this, remember me, it's five or six on State Street, and the rest of them are on Willow. We are only looking, though, for 15-minute spots from nine o'clock in the morning till six o'clock at night. We have residents in the apartment buildings across the street, and many of them do park on the street at night, we don't want to interfere with that. So we're not looking for a permanent 15-minute, and hopefully, I don't know how that sign reads, but that would be something that would be appropriate. Currently, we have, behind the library, I think we have five 15-minute spots, and in the front, we have, depending on if we're fighting with the post officer, not four or five. So it'll be approximately the same. We expect the traffic in the new library to approximately double. Our biggest year was 2018 before COVID, that was 113,000, we're expecting about 200,000 people with the new library. Not specifically on this, but before I sit down, I have invited Borough Council staff to, to a tour. I think you guys will be very pleased with what you're going to have here in the, in the borough. It's really turning into be something quite special. So tonight, all we're looking for is the 15-minute spots. We don't need those until probably May or June, but it would be nice to at least take one thing off of our, our plate.
Questions for Mr. Yetter?
Safety.
Yeah, that's what.
We did the. We agreed just to bring it to council without making a formal recommendation, and either way, we thought council would just needed to hear directly from the library and have the conversation. There was some question about resident access during the day, but the, we have no way of easily solving that. It seems that there generally has been a lot of available parking for the contractors that are there now during the day. We didn't, we did not make a specific recommendation, other than to bring it to council, have a full conversation on it. There were no concerns on the 15-minute meters. The question was, were we meter, was, how would it impact any of the residents that, that are there? That was the only question, there was no question. I think we thought that the 15 minutes seemed, we asked if maybe 20 minutes or half hour was necessary to turn, you know, to be able to keep them turning, and they felt that 15 minutes was enough.
Meters? None of our spots are metered now for the 15 minutes. So if you meet- So if you meter them, they will go across the street and park in the parking garage or parking lot. So they're not metered now. There's no meters down there. We would hope that they could remain that way for the library to get people in and out quickly. Just, I mean, say. For you to consider.
I'd also just be concerned that there are probably some residents of there. And just have a second for that.
That, I don't have an answer to that. I do know that when we owned the lot since 2019, and through this process, there has, that has not been an issue. You know, we're not going to be telling people, oh, this guy's been sitting here for a half hour, go tow him. Even now, with the few spots we have out front of the library, I would say probably 50% are full ongoing. Couple of times a day, they're all full, but many times they're not, and they're not all us, they're the post office as well. So I would expect there would be reason, there would be place for people to park there. But we're trying to encourage people, you know, in case you haven't been by the Y parking lot, there's a big sign on it that says the, no parking here except for library staff. No contractors are allowed to park in there. You see how well that's worked. Nobody pays attention to the signs. Okay?
I think that, I think that, John, please, you've wanted, you've wanted to talk with each, this isn't question and answer, John. I'm sorry. It's not question and answer, John. Mr. Thomas, please. You had time at the beginning of the meeting where you could have addressed agenda items, so that was your time. So questions from council, comments?
13 spaces, sorry.
They're currently not metered, too.
No, I was saying they shouldn't, because if they are metered, then people will use the lot. They're not supposed to be using any way because that we can't designate. So why have to? Efficient. I agree. Efficient.
And let me just clarify. I make no personal gain out of that whatsoever. Is that a conflict of interest?
We'll allow the solicitor to answer that question. Yeah. I wonder if we could do, could you, you had 15-minute spaces there, could you issue resident permits there that would allow them to park for free? Or, you know, or to be, to be exempt from the 15-minute, like, could you, is there a, sorry about that, a permit that you could offer? So if you live in the block and you just wanted, and we gave them a placard that said they're exempt from the 15 minutes? So that really was just restricting guests that are coming in and out? In a way, Mr. Thomas, please. Mr. Thomas, please, this is council discussion. Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
We did have.
So I think that, I think that we need to, I mean. It's only going to be 15 minutes, and people that are going to be using that are going to be stopping and leaving. And I just don't think that it's an extraordinary request. I mean, I think with everything happening with the construction of the library, if I'm wrong, in front of like Sam's and all that up, it used to be metered. I think we said, well, we'll get rid of the meter.
Never metered that I'm aware of. Stops right before sentence.
It's not been. And maybe on the side of next to the library. There are five there. And then keep the residential side. Going out. Seeing that this is a community library, I know that it's in the borough, and we, and that's our first priority. This is a community library. I think we do want to make it convenient for those coming in to support the library. Joel, where are you going to?
I was just going to say, you know, the library as it is now has 15-minute spots on State Street in front of it. So for those at least, for basically moving those spots down closer to where the new library is, those old spots will presumably.
But currently, the short-term parking in the block, it was temporary during construction so that the contractors wouldn't park there all day?
I mean, at the old, now the old library building, yeah, that has, those will presumably stop, cease being 15 minutes and become normal parking space. So, you know, we're just moving 15 minutes, you know, further out of the main downtown where were people, when I drive home, you know, through, from home, working through that part of State Street, there's very rarely people parked there that far out of the main downtown. Those five spots, as proposed, are a done deal to me. It's just deciding Willow Street and stuff. How much that'll impact residents of the apartment buildings there. So like Tim was trying to think of ideas of getting other 15-minute spots maybe more centralized on State Street rather than creeping.
Across the street?
I always see cars there.
Yes.
Yeah, we're not looking for any spots on the side of the apartments. They're all right, adjacent to the library. If I could add, one of the biggest complaints the library has gotten is people don't want to come to Kennet Square because of no free parking. And we get this all the time. The second most is about your guys that give them tickets. They're really ticked about that. We really think getting people into the borough that are going to eat at the restaurants, shop in the shops is a real positive. And this is a small concession, and no one's going to go for a meal on 15 minutes. Well, maybe Sam's across the street, and these will also benefit Sam's. You know, he'll have spots for people coming in and out of there.
There has been some discussion here about residential parking. Jeff, could you clarify when you would aim to stop the 15-minute parking each year?
Six o'clock at night, so they could park overnight. And we're not going to enforce any of that. So if it's 15-minute, there's no meters, and someone comes at five o'clock, we're not going to say anything. We don't think we'll need all of that all the time, but at busy times, we probably will. And maybe we can cut it down if you, if you know, that's always full, which I sincerely doubt we can, you know, we'd leave it there, but if it's not, we can cut it back. We just don't know. A lot of our patrons now do digital download of books, and that cuts down some, yet our store, our foot traffic this year is up significantly over last year. And when you see the new library, you'll understand why we're going to get a lot of people coming in there. There's a lot of things for them to do. So we appreciate your consideration. And just to be clear, the, it was no on the three and a half million? Okay, just checking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yetter. Counsel, any other discussion?
I know this is going way broad, but I think we need a parking study. But so many times, we've sold. Even if we start with one, you have a proposal, I think it was the year. Was it, it wasn't a lot, it wasn't a number. That'll be on Wednesday's workshop, so.
All right, so is it a safe assumption? We are not moving this to consent? Is there still discussion to be had? Right now, what we move to consent is approving the 15-minute parking spaces as requested by the law. Do I move that to consent or separate item on?
I think even if we just spend five more minutes on it.
Thank you all. It's out of consent. Approval of bills paid. Kyle or Mr. Norris?
We did review all the bills through the January 26 meeting, and I subsequently reviewed those, the other bills personally, and the finance committee was fine through the 26th. Last one.
Any questions? That to consent, and then the approval of council minutes from January 9th and 11th. Any questions or comments? My comment is I want to thank Ms. Zavala for handling those two meetings in my. All right, that's the end of the discussion items. Final council manager, let's hear, anything else from council? Mr. Manager?
I, yeah, just a few quick items. So police department and non-uniform, we have employee of the year recognitions on Wednesday. And I understand chief is swearing in a few officers, too. That should be a really positive part of the meeting. And we'll have two workshop sessions. One will be led by Public Works going through all of our capital projects coming this year. General timelines and. Used to cover given. For, and the second piece is trying to kickstart a lot of the larger planning efforts. Obviously, the conversation a few minutes ago highlights. Need for a wider parking study, but, you know, really, I'm looking at some of our major commercial areas like State Street. You really should consider parking with traffic with development and have a kind of holistic view of it. So we'll go through on some of those efforts and nail down some details.
There. Real quick on parking, because I, I do agree, we have not done a study. We've talked about it for years, we keep punting it, pushing it further down. We did talk about the difference between doing a study and having a conversation, a lead conversation on philosophy on there, because we weren't sure what a study was going to uncover on there. So I do think it's something we have to talk about. And I have to be honest with you, when we talked about the 15-minute spots for the library, in the back of my mind, I was thinking that we may want to meter that on State Street. I generally would like to see all of State Street metered, especially down to the new apartments on there. And we've had conversations around that. There is some dedicated permit parking on State in front of Liberty Place that I don't think is being well-used. I think it would be a good time to have the conversation around a metered approach that runs the entire length of State Street. And I also think it should run further north on Union Street on there. So I think we should look at those two main streets and consider meters that really run the length of State and further north on Union. And years ago, when I was a kid, you'd go up the meter and you'd turn it, and it would be 15 minutes. Anything else, Mr. Mayor? All right. I know there were probably a lot of questions or comments regarding all these action items, so I encourage the public to use public comments to get those issues out on Wednesday. And if you stick to questions on the agenda items, I may give you a couple more minutes. Meeting adjourned.